Oaths, and y'all are going to take your oaths. Tina's going to read those two, and you're gonna, you're gonna say yes, hopefully, to all this. And so Tina, I'm going to let you take it over. And if you would, just stand up where you're at and try to speak, get the microphones as high as possible, and make sure they're all on.
Mitch Lakine, let's start with you. Raise your right hand. I'm Mitch Lakine.
I'm Mitch Lakine.
Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The United States Constitution.
The United States Constitution.
The Colorado Constitution.
The Colorado Constitution.
And the Town of Monument Charter and Ordinances.
And the Town of Monument Charter and Ordinances.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Mayor.
The duties of the Office of Mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm, I am about to enter.
Council members, please stand. All right, raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve King.
Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The United States Constitution.
The United States Constitution.
The Colorado Constitution.
The Colorado Constitution.
And the Town of Monument Charter and Ordinances.
And the Town of Monument Charter and Ordinances.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
I don't think I need to do this, but I want to. I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, January 3rd, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
All right, before we begin, Mr. Foreman, you had an announcement you wanted to make?
Dude. As you know, Sean Hemingway, our chief, served this community very well for the last three years. His last day with the Town of Monument was January 2nd, 2022. He let us know this about a year ago. He said that he was going to retire and probably sometime in the first part of January of 2023. I'm sorry, I said January 2nd, 2022, it's 2023 already. We opened this position last month. We have had at least 75 applicants apply for the Chief of Police. In the interim, I have to select a candidate to serve as the interim Chief of Police. And I've done that, I've selected Tim Johnson to serve as the interim Chief of Police. And at this time, I'd invite Tim to come up here. And the Police Department, I noticed we have a lot of people up here. If y'all could come up to the front, kind of surround. Yeah, y'all come on up here. As you can see, he has a lot of support from his comrades. Commander, you've been here for how long? Three and a half years, served in Fountain before then?
Yes.
Yep, 12 and a half in Fountain. Comes with a great pedigree. We really appreciate all the work you've done for us so far. This is a tough decision to be able to have to make this, but he made it really easy for us. Like I said, he's going to be interim until the point we select the full-time police chief. We appreciate everybody being here. I'm going to give you your oath now. All right, okay. So I, Tim Johnson.
I, Tim Johnson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and bear true faith in allegiance to the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the state of Colorado and to the ordinances in Town of the Town of Monument and that I will defend and protect the lives safety and property of the people of Monument and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Interim Chief of Police according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. That's it, sir?
All right, Ms. Erickson, can you take role?
Mary Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
And Councilmember Ramos has resigned.
Okay, before us, we have a consent agenda. Do we have any modifications to that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a modification.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the December meeting minutes because this council cannot defend the legitimacy of the meeting minutes until a town attorney can be obtained to review the meetings and the minutes.
I hear a motion, do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Sir Erickson?
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mary Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
No.
Okay, that passes four to one. All right, next on the list is number four, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Erickson?
So I have sheets of paper. You guys will write the, your council member name and then who you want to nominate. And then I will collect them and read them out loud.
Okay, thank you. And just to put some background, I, this is the method that was used in 2018 when the, the Board of Trustees appointed or elected former Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Elliott. So we're doing the same, same thing. It was approved by the attorney that we had at the time prior to tonight's meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Romanella nominated Romanella. Councilmember Santa Abbott nominated Steve King. Councilmember Kimpel nominated King. Councilmember Steve King nominated Ken Kimpel. And Councilmember Lakine nominated King.
So that's three for King.
Yep.
Mr. King, do you accept that nomination?
I'll accept it.
Okay, and yeah, we'll have a, I guess we'll shift it at the next meeting where the seats are. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Steve King. All right, next up is ordinance number 012023, an ordinance approving a final planned unit development for Lot 3 of Monument Marketplace North. Where is Ms. Booth? There she is, okay.
Hello, council members. My first presentation, so let's all be kind. As stated, this is an ordinance 012023 for Lot 3 Monument Marketplace North Final PUD. The applicant's proposing a fast food restaurant west of Jackson Creek Parkway known as Kentucky Fried Chicken, also known as KFC. The applicant requests approval of the Lot 3 Monument Marketplace North Final PUD Planned Unit Development. The existing zoning, the subject property was platted as part of the Monument Marketplace filing number 16 Final Plat, which was approved November 19th, 2007. The subsequent Monument Marketplace North Preliminary PD Site Plan proposed 30 types of permitted uses, including restaurants, lounges, fast food establishments. The Preliminary PD Site Plan was approved on, or on July 1st, 2019. The applicant will be required to receive site plan approval as part of the future construction documents. The site plan will need to demonstrate compliance with all the aspects of this PUD as well as our municipal code. A final drainage report for KFC Quick Service Restaurant was submitted to the town August 15th, 2022. Water and sewer service have been secured through the Triview Metropolitan District. The land around this new development is primarily vacant, except for the electrical substation located across Jackson Creek Parkway to the east. There's no direct access to Jackson Creek Parkway from this lot. Instead, access is available off Harness Road and an interior private road that eventually connects to Cinematic, or Cinematic View, and that eventually connects to Jackson Creek Parkway. A five-foot sidewalk will be constructed along Jackson Creek Parkway. A traffic impact compliance memo dated November 7th, 2022 by LSC Transportation Consultants identifies that the proposed use is projected to generate approximately 1,142 vehicle trips on the average weekday, distributed with roughly half entering and half exiting during a 24-hour period. The memo further indicates that traffic signal warrants at the intersection of Harness Road and Jackson Creek Parkway are not based on the preliminary analysis of the short-term peak hour volumes and recommends traffic count monitoring to assess, to assess future traffic signal warrants. In compliance with the comprehensive plan, the Lot 3 Monument Marketplace North Final PUD complies with the town's plan because it's within an area designated as mixed use, which is shown on the future land use map. Pertinent opportunities and policies from the plan include Policy LU3, allow for a waterway of land use types to meet changing community needs. Policy LU5, promote infill development on vacant land with attention to the vacant or underutilized land in and around the downtown core. Or Policy TR9, protect adjacent residential areas from adverse noise glare and the visual impacts of parking and loading related to non-residential development. The Planning Commission unanimously passed the following motion at its meeting on December 14th. The Planning Commission recommended approval of Lot 3 Monument Marketplace North Final PUD based on the finding that the proposed Final PUD is in compliance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the town's land development code. Staff has reviewed the subject application and analyzed the applicable criteria from Section 18.03.460 of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. Based on staff's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable development standards and adequately addresses all criteria. Staff recommends approval of the PUD based on the findings that the proposed PUD is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the code. The entitled proportion, this is originally part of the Regency Part PID. The Preliminary PUD was approved by the Board of Trustees on July 1st, 2019, and we are now looking at the final PUD and plat. Section 1803460, Final PUD Review and Approval Criteria, I won't go through all of these, but they are here before you on the screen. Here's some more, if you have quick reading, good luck with that. And then here are some recommended motions for approval, approval with conditions, denial, or if you would like to continue it to a future date. Again, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I believe the applicants are here if you have any specific questions for them.
The applicant's here, you said? Do they have a presentation? Yeah, I couldn't hear, you can, you can come up. Did you, did you give the presentation to staff?
The applicant's presentation.
Hi. My name's Sandy Parrott, I'm from KFC head office, so from Kentucky, but you can hear my accent, I'm from New Zealand. Kelly, do you want to come up here? Because I want to introduce you too, because you're a big part of this. Kelly's one of our major franchisees. He is one of the best trainers that we have in the system, and he is so dedicated to KFC and has been for over 20 years, probably 30 now, I would say. But, okay. Yeah, that's amazing. So Kelly is really dedicated, and he's been doing KFC for so many years. Obviously, he's been training a lot of people in the community, and he lives in the area, as do I. And I work remotely through Kentucky Fried Chicken. But basically, what we've been looking at over the last year with Kelly has been applying for the KFC here in Monument Lot 3. We've had, pretty much, we've been doing our most latest and greatest design for the site, which is really exciting and fitting with the urban design plan. So really subdued in terms of making sure it fits in with the design plans and the urban design criteria that's set by the city limits. So this is basically an explanation of the site. It's, it's very typical for a KFC. We're expecting a really great average flow through for traffic as, as has been put through with the traffic report, too. So if we go to the next slide. It may go.
There we go.
Thank you. So this is the location. You can see it's right in front of the electrical turn station, which is obviously good for a KFC and not necessarily good for residential. So it's a perfect spot for us, and not very many other people may like to live there. So I think it's a great one. Next slide, please. This is our proposed drive-through, so really taking off more cars than we usually would off the road and also making it dual-drive-through, which is a global standard now so that you have less cars blocking the actual roadway, and it brings them right off. So that's the new technology that we have. Next slide, please. So these are our elevations, they're really subdued, they're in fitting with all the different buildings that you see around, such as the new, the car, I think it's the Car Wash, I'm not sure of the name of it though, but the Car Wash is similar, it's all in fitting with the same beige hues. And we wouldn't normally do that for a KFC, so we really are making sure that we're fitting in with the community, and we're really only doing a bare minimum of signage on the site. And the next slide. And again, here, you can see the same pieces. We have a lot of parapets as well to make sure we cover up all the HVAC and mechanical gear that sits on the roof. But it's also very important to make sure we keep stuff cool and, you know, warm in, warm in summer, warm in winter and cool in summer. And that's really. But we do, I think, Kelly, you could explain it better than I would. But generally speaking, Kelly will train up to 30 members within the community, lots of great opportunities for teenagers to have labor, their own jobs, and as well as managers who, from what Kelly's trained over the years, they really go on to have great success. So it's, it's a full-rounded training process, and KFC is one of the best that does the training for this, as well as McConnell's, as, as I'm sure you're aware. I think that's all, I wasn't prepared to present, I'm sorry. So I hope that I made sense and you could understand my accent. Thank you.
Okay, any members of the council have any questions for the applicant?
I have a few. I'm sure others do, so I'll keep it brief. So I, my first question is, is this, is this owner-operated or is this a franchise story? Okay, okay.
I'm the owner and the everything. I went to work for KFC when I was 13 as a cook. So that's all I've ever done my whole life. So I live in Pueblo, we have a store in Pueblo, but I'll be up here every day.
All right, awesome. And so, so I have a quick question for Mike. What's, what's our sales tax rate here? What do we get? What portion is ours? I didn't mean, I didn't mean to stump you guys. I'll go to the next question while you're looking at a.
Yes. For the Town of Monument.
Oh, right.
Depending on the location of KFC.
Okay. All right, so I was coming, I, I was pretty close. So I guess I'm figuring it's generating about 100,000 in sales tax. And I, I want to make, mostly I want to make another comment. So I do say, I want to say I want to appreciate the fact that you took the time to look at the adjacent architecture and color schemes and things like that. Because one of the issues that we have right now, as far as I can see, is that we don't have any real types of design standards, and, and pretty much, it can be a hodgepodge of anything. You know, I'd like to see that happen here sometime, that we get some kind of citizen group together maybe, and, and work on some types of design standards, something, you know, like Woodland Park has, or Evergreen, or, you know. Once we establish the characteristic and the identity of the town, so that we have some consistency there. So I just wanted to make the comment that I appreciate you doing that. And that's all I have.
Any other comments from the council?
About the signage, you said that it wasn't going to be a general size, example like over by the trains where they have.
We're still in the process of, because the sign permits, as I understand it, is a separate permit than the building. And so we're still working to see what they will allow us as a monument sign, you know, a short sign, similar to Freddie's, like you're talking about. But we haven't got to that yet.
Yes, I think many of the residents would not like to see one of those tall.
Now, they're, they're not going to let us do a tall one, I can already tell you that. Yeah. It'll be, yeah, we'll have a sign similar to Freddie's.
Then, from a long time ago, when I got here, I know that there was talk about the original KFC was supposed to be the next to Freddie's.
This is a, this is a different owner.
So, because that one, that one, I remember when we asked, because there was mobile homes over there, and they put up the fence over there for that lot to protect them. So is that, I mean.
I can. The, the original lot that was down by Freddie's was the franchisee that owns Colorado Springs.
Yes.
And then we came, because they sat on it for years. And so then we came in, applied for it, and KFC granted us the option. So they're just sitting on a piece of dirt down there right now.
Okay, this is a public hearing item. So if there's anybody who would like to speak for or against this particular ordinance, you, you just have to. Okay.
Um, I just, I want to say that I.
Can you say your name?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Matt Brunk, 17136 Buffalo Valley Path, Monument, Colorado, 80132. I know when I voted for many of you up here. And I know that there's been people that have, that have said that the new board is anti-growth and anti-development. I don't see it, personally see it that way. But what I do like to see is the developer working really hard to fit within the community and really hard to be a part of the community. And so I would like to see more of this. As, as you said, the design standards are becoming adjacent. What you did as far as the traffic and things like that, obviously, whether I eat KFC or don't eat KFC, whether we do or not, the fact that the developer is coming to basically say, we want to be a part of this town, this is very refreshing to me, and this is what I see as a really beautiful thing. And so I just, I'm, I'm grateful for how, how much effort you guys have put into this. And so I just, I hope that, that you guys continue to hold these developers and future developers their feet to the fire to make sure that they fit within the small-town community that we all, everybody has said they want, yet I don't necessarily know if everybody believes that. So I just want to say that specifically, I'm not necessarily for you guys or against you guys. I just, I'm grateful for that you guys are working hard to fit within the community, so thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment for or against? By the way, I'm for KFC, I cannot wait for some mashed potatoes and, just, just, sorry.
Patty Foster, Woodmore. So I, question is, is, do we have anything, any ordinance that says how many fast foods on Mac, like comparatively to other businesses within the community? I know that when questions have been asked about what can we bring to this town to make it the kind of town that, as residents, we want it to look like, people continually say, less fast food, no more brake centers, no more oil change centers, no more banks and all of that. So my question is, is that do we have anything in the plan that says, at what point do we say enough with the fast food and that we're looking for other items that the town has stated that they would prefer to see go in?
So this was to speak for, you know, for, it's a public hearing item, so we're, we're talking about this specific applicant right now. I could address that, or any of us could address that during public comment. The short answer is, it's, we have land use codes, right? And if a developer or a business owner wants to come in and it's part of the, and it's part of the land use, I don't think you're going to find anybody on the, on the council that will say we don't want another dentist.
But isn't there a town plan where, when the town was put together, there was, this is, this is the blueprint of what we're looking for, and this is what.
There's a, there's a comprehensive plan, it's going to, we have funding in the budget to redo it. So when we get to that point, we'll be looking for citizen input. And you're, by all means, feel free to, to join in. The fact that you live in Woodmore is, is okay, you should still be, you're one of our neighbors, and you get impacted by it, so you should join in.
Okay, so just for the record, I'm, I'm not for another fast food. I would like to see something, another form of sit-down dining.
Understand, thank you. Anybody else from the in-house audience? Drew, do you have anybody online that would like to make a comment? Okay, then if there's no more comments, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I, I would like to discuss this just a little bit. And, and to kind of, to address the land use stuff. So we have, we have land that's zoned. We have land that has permitted uses on it. Those permitted uses are permitted. And there's not a lot we can do to change some of these, probably most of them, because that would be considered a taking. And if we take away property rights, the town's going to most certainly get sued, and we would most certainly lose. Where we have the most power is to, when, when. Where we have the most power is to, when when land comes in for rezoning, because then we have the option to approve it or deny it or modify it. This particular piece of property is got zoning rights and the zoning rights have um restaurant uses and retail uses and other things that um we, we can't personally get involved with changing those uses because they were already granted. So what we can do is work on design standards or work on ways to mitigate the uses that come in and to make the, make it more of a small town feel. I know people like mom and pops. I do too, believe me. I don't eat fast food. So, you know, it's, 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 it's not my thing, but most of these franchises are mom and pops and we gotta kind of realize that too, because you know, they have nationwide recognition. But um, but it's difficult now to to come in and and change that. I I'll just say that. I mean, it it's almost impossible. And I hear, you know, a lot about the dentist offices and all that stuff too. And to be honest with you, I mean, we probably need them or they wouldn't be here. And um, they're really no impact to us. They have little buildings with little footprints and few parking spaces and short business hours and and all that. And I get there's a lot. But um, and the same with with the, with the fast food. I don't know what an appropriate number would be. I mean, we can go out and try and lure people into town that we want to try to fill up these lots that are sitting around here, but it's, it's again, it's, it's not, it's kind of not in our purview to be able to change land uses and and we'll just have to try to, like I said, figure out how to mitigate it the best we can. That's all I have on that. But I do, I do want to make some other comments later, but I'll let everybody go.
Any other comments from the council or is there a motion?
Could we talk a little bit more descriptive about the traffic going in and out at this location on Jackson Street? Because there's not going to be a light in what I saw, I think on slide number four off the street.
As far as I understand, there's, there's a proposed light that's going to go in on Harms Road from the developers that are doing that whole the apartment complex and the whole Jackson Creek Parkway. But is what I was told. I don't know if it's true or not.
Who are you told that by?
The developer.
Oh, hang on. I think it's, it's been brought up before. Um, multiple traffic controls are going in. Ms. Booth, can you add anything to that?
The traffic um report said we need to continually monitor it to see if one is warranted. So right now one is not warranted. And as part of the Jackson Creek um improvements, we'll keep monitoring the traffic there and see. The, I am not aware of a signal going in there at this time. Doesn't mean it won't be warranted at some point, but at this point, no.
If you correct me if I'm wrong, there's no left turn out onto Jackson Creek?
There, there's no access from Jack, from Jackson Creek to our lot at all.
I know, you have to come on to that.
Correct.
But so going up on Harms Road, you're going to have to turn right.
You can, you can make a left there and do it whenever I leave for the, the car wash, I go up that way to make the left. I've got a big truck.
Again, I just see the added, the lane, people trying to get out to make the left turn onto Jackson Creek to go northbound and then get tied up into that by Higgy's where the light is. So and especially, do you have anything in place for when you first open up? I know that it's going to be a while, but when you first open up, how to mitigate the traffic coming in and out?
Yeah, we've already, we've already coordinated with the city, whatever they need, if they need us to bring in traffic control or if you guys want us to bring in traffic control, we certainly will.
Because I can tell you the developer that, that they're putting in the the Whataburger, they said, oh, we expect three days worth of traffic issues. And that's not going to be the case. It's going to be more than that for sure. So I would anticipate, I don't know, would you guys have time for?
Yeah, well, we, we typically bring in traffic control at our expense for our openings. I mean, not only has it helped the city, but it also helps us. Sometimes you can get some really mad people in line over chicken. Someone cuts it for someone or whatever.
He has a big truck.
Yeah, and it's always.
So do you.
Well, our, our delivery trucks deliver at three o'clock in the morning. Yeah, yeah, three o'clock in the morning.
Any other questions from the council? Or a motion?
Well, I got, I got another comment that I want to, I'm going to tell you guys. You have something, Jim? Okay, I don't want to take away from anybody's time here. So for staff, I want to put this on, on uh record. So there's five lots that I'm seeing here that run alongside Jackson Creek Parkway. This is one of them and the car wash is another one. This particular location looks like it has um design features all the way around the building just because of how it's oriented. But in the future, when we get these other buildings coming in, it looks like there's a service road adjacent to Jackson Creek Parkway that goes between Jackson Creek Parkway and these five lots, wh- which uses um, which is in essence, the rear of all these buildings. So when these buildings come in at some point in time, I mean, from Jackson Creek Parkway, it looks like we're going to be looking at the loading docks and the backs of the buildings and trash cans and and everything else. Somehow we need to figure out how to make that attractive, because I see it right now where it's, it's not going to be that way. So I just want to put that on record so that when we have anything else that comes in later.
The front of our building is facing Jackson Creek.
Right.
Back of it's facing Cinematic.
Right. You, you, I saw your orientation and your orientation is good, but there's, there's other, there's other lots that that are adjacent to this. And this is like, so this is a, a message to staff because I can see retail or whatever else is going to go in here at some point. And then driving down Jackson Creek Parkway, you're, you're just looking at the back of buildings that have. Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. I mean, again, a- as Matt said, um, you know, you, you took some effort to try to adjust your building to the character of our town as much as you can for a franchise fast food place. And um, and and I, and I do, I do appreciate that for sure. Because it's hard. I mean, we're trying to keep a small town feel here and it's been really difficult. And you know, I don't, I don't know how we do this going forward, but we, but we need to try to make some kind of standards that are, you know, more for the, the character of the neighborhood or all these people sitting out here. So I appreciate, I appreciate you doing that.
Anything? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance approving a final planned unit development for lot three Monument Marketplace North.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Kemble?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
I'd also, I'd also like to make just one quick comment on the fact that um, the, the planning commission has been doing a, an awesome job. I know we're going to talk about them later, but they've been doing an awesome job on, on um, I guess, interrogating applicants because they've been, they've been getting to the, they've been getting some better questions out and and a lot more feedback that I appreciate too.
Okay, next up is Resolution oh one twenty twenty-three, resolution initiating annexation and setting a hearing date for the town council of the town of Monument to consider annexation of an area known as Beacon Light LLC Annexation. Ms. Booth.
This is a resolution to initiate annexation and set the public hearing. The actual public hearing will be scheduled for February. The site location is west of Interstate twenty-five, one nine three seven five Beacon Light Road. It is the area in green. Beacon Light LLC submitted an annexation petition for approximately five acres. The annexation request known as Beacon Light LLC Annexation is accompanied by a draft annexation agreement that defines the terms of the annexation. To comply with state annexation requirements, this proposal will not extend boundaries of the town of Monument more than three miles in any direction from the present municipal boundary. The annexation of the property meets the requirements of and fully complies with the applicable requirements of the Annexation Act and section thirty of article two of the Colorado Constitution. Colorado's annexation statutes require there be a community of interest between the property's planned use and the town. Contiguity can suffice for this to exist, but also the future residents can be expected to shop, work, socialize and recreate within the town. Monument's annexation plan, growth area plan, adopted in February twenty seventeen as part of the town comprehensive plan, envisions annexing this area of El Paso County. In addition, the passage of Resolution twenty-two dash two zero two-two, a resolution adopting the town of Monument three-mile plan for twenty twenty-two aligns with the current proposed annexation. The applicant is proposing to zone the property light industrial. The future land use map from the comprehensive plan envisions this area as light industrial. The light industrial zoning matches the uses that are already within the town limits to the south. Types of land uses in an L I zone include contractor shops, equipment sales, freight yards, light manufacturing warehouses, self-storage, outdoor, outdoor storage and offices, just to name a few. This is a copy of the actual annexation plat. The county zoning is commercial community C C. Annexation of this area provides more control and decision-making authority over what development occurs and will ensure that they complies with the Monument Land Development Code. Annexation will continue to bring properties along Beacon Light Road into the town's boundaries up to the Douglas County line. The planning commission reviewed the annexation at its December fourteenth meeting and they are required to provide a review and recommendation on the annexation petition to the town of Monument per their bylaws. Their bylaws state the planning commission shall review all proposed annexations to the town of Monument and make recommendations to the town council as to whether or not the annexation complies with the comprehensive plan and whether the annexation is generally in the best interest of the town of Monument. The planning commission unanimously passed the following motion. The planning commission recommends approval of the RMG Beacon Light Annexation for approximately five acres, finding it complies with the comprehensive plan and that the annexation of the property is generally in the best interest of the town of Monument. According to the theme set forth in the comprehensive plan, the town will responsibly consider all petitions for annexation of lands within the urban growth area and will not decline annexation of a property except for good cause. The comprehensive plan also outlines how annexation of lands beyond the present town boundaries can benefit Monument. Annexations are conducted in accordance with state statutes and the petitioner has followed all the set requirements. At this step in the annexation process, as dictated by CRS thirty-one twelve one oh one dash thirty-one twelve one twenty-three or three thirty-one twelve one twenty-three, the town council reviews and approves a resolution initiating annexation and setting a public hearing date. The public hearing date shall not be less than thirty days nor more than sixty days after the effective date of this resolution. Resolution oh one twenty twenty-three sets the public hearing date for February sixth, twenty twenty-three, where the town council will conduct a hearing to establish that the area is eligible for annexation, will consider the annexation, annexation agreement and zoning of the property. The applicant continues to collaborate with town staff on the annexation agreement to ensure the success of the annexation with no adverse impacts on the town. An annexation impact report was not required since this property is less than ten acres. Staff has reviewed the subject annexation petition and analyzed the applicable criteria and statutes. Based on this analysis, staff concludes that the proposed project is consistent with all the applicable requirements and adequately addresses all criteria. Staff to use the CRS, Monument Developments Codes and the Comprehensive Plan and the Planning Commission bylaws. In addition, staff relied on the town of Monument's future land use designation map from the Comprehensive Plan as well as confirming that the parcels are part of the town's annexation growth area plan. Based on the above analysis, staff recommends approval of Resolution oh one two zero two-three, initiating annexation of Beacon Light LLC Annexation and setting a public hearing date of February sixth, twenty twenty-three. These are your motions, recommended motions for approval, approval with conditions or denial. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any uh comments or questions from the council?
Yes, um, you said that a traffic study did, is not required to be done because it's less than ten acres.
No, that is an annexation impact report is not required because it's less than ten acres.
Because Beacon Light Rose, this is a proposed storage facility.
I believe this is a storage. I'm getting this one confused with another or a contractor's yard, but at this point, we are just looking at the annexation and setting the hearing date. And then in February, we'll be going over the zoning and the annexation. And at that time, you can, we can address that further.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Do you know why they want to annex this into the town? Is it for water?
They do have a current well, so the well would be included as part of the annexation agreement to turn those water rights over to the city. But yes, they would be connecting to Town of Monument water.
Okay, so there's, so there's no proposed zoning at this time. We're just going to vote to annex or not. Erica, put it on the public hearing to, right now it'd be just to put it on the public hearing. And then when we have a public hearing, that's when zoning will come up.
Correct. You are not voting to annex tonight. You are just voting to set the public hearing. And then at that public hearing, you would discuss the annexation, annexation agreement. And then a separate item would be the initial zoning of the property.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Look for a motion?
For the resolution number zero one dash two twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, a resolution initiating annexation and setting a hearing date for town council of the town of Monument to consider annexation of the area known as Beacon Light LLC Annexation. Um, and the next hearing date will be February sixth.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Kemble?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five and not zero. Next up, Resolution number oh two twenty twenty-three, a resolution appointing members to the planning commission. Ms. Booth, again.
I'm back. This is to a point, uh, planning commissioners are appointed for a two-year term. The terms for Commissioners Willamie, Trujillo, Ayers and Egley concluded on December thirty-first. Um, all four commissioners were eligible for reappointment and we requested letters of intent from them. Of those four, three submitted letters, Commissioners Trujillo, Ayers and Egley. Commissioner Willamie chose not to seek reappointment. Staff also did advert, um, advertise for openings in the Tribune and we did so on social media. We did receive another letter of interest from alternate commissioner Greg Collins, who would like to be appointed as a regular voting member. So at this time, um, staff is recommending appointment of Martin Trujillo, Daniel Ayers, Ray Egley and Greg Collins to the planning commission for two-year term from January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, noting that if you do move forward with these appointments, we still have one vacancy to fill for an alternate member.
Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the applicants that were in the packet? Any questions or comments about?
I'll make some comments because um I have followed the planning commission closely, as I know Ken has as well. And um, you know, up until that we're sitting up here and we can't follow them as closely as we used to. And um, I I have seen, I have seen this group come together um in the last particularly couple of years, but in the last year for sure to where they ask all the right questions, they dig into the codes, they figure out what is best for our town and they have pushed back on a lot of these applications. And you know, it it used to be years ago, it was kind of a rubber stamp, but it isn't like that any longer. And and these, these uh people in particular, I think, do. And, and these, these people in particular, I think, do the town justice to be back on this commission.
Any other comments or questions about the applicants? Looking for a motion? Anybody?
Making a motion to?
Pass.
To pass resolution number zero-two dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution appointing members to the Planning Commission. Is it the three positions? It's, it's three or?
Four.
Four.
It is four. Okay, four, but not Wilhamey.
He's not listed there.
Okay. Yes, I make a motion to do that.
Second. A motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Or Mayor Lakine?
Yes. The motion passes five to zero.
And Mayor, may I reiterate, we have a lot of people here in the audience. If you would be excited to serve on the Planning Commission, we would be very excited to have you. So please feel free to email me or go online and fill out an application.
Just as Mr. Koopman walks back into the room. All right, next up is Resolution zero-three twenty-twenty-three, a resolution adopting public meeting notice and posting requirements. Ms. Erickson?
Good evening all again. Section three-point-six, the Town of Monument Home Rule Charter states a town shall, the Town Council shall adopt a resolution or adopt by resolution, public meeting notice and posting requirements. The municipality designates the website, www.townofmonument.org, as the official electronic posting place, which is registered with D O A. The second method and location is a hard copy posting on the bulletin board in the lobby of Town Hall. And that's all I've really got. Nothing for questions.
Any questions from the council?
You know me, I can't go without asking a question. So the, the one question I do have is that we have two locations. We have an emergent location and we have a standard location. So if we have an emergent situation and we can't get into Town Hall, how do we post that?
A lot of staff is able to work remotely. So we're typically able to make posting happen.
So you could, you could post it on the website even if it was an emergency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions?
Still plan on posting on like social media? Upcoming events?
Yeah.
As well.
Okay, there's no other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution number zero-three twenty-twenty-three, a resolution adopting public meeting notice and posting requirements.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
That resolution passes five-zero. Next up, resolution number oh-four twenty-twenty-three, a resolution declaring a vacancy on the Town Council and outlining an appointment process. Ms. Erickson?
The proposed resolution formally declares two vacancies, as of tonight, there's two, on Town Council and outlines a process by which the council can make appointments within ninety days or call a special election. Person with interest to be appointed needs to submit interest, letter of interest, resumes, and notarized affidavit affirming they meet the qualifications listed in the charter to the town clerk by January thirtieth. Interested candidates are invited to attend the regulars, regular meetings scheduled for February sixth, so then the council can ask questions. April second is a deadline to fill the vacancy by appointment or the ordering of a special election. If passed by council, the process will be noticed in the Tri-Lux Tribune on January eighteenth and twenty-fifth, displayed on town's website and all social media platforms during the next few weeks.
Hey, you did say vacancies, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we will probably need to have this resolution that I have rewritten to show the two members that are leaving their seats vacant. So I won't sign it yet. Any comments or questions from the council? About the process and what we have before us?
Level three statement. Having to step down. Plus. So hopefully there's people in the town that will be eager to step up and willing to accept the challenge sit on the council.
All right, well, then I think we need to have language that will indicate there's a modification to indicate two vacancies, and then we'll vote on the modified, modified language.
I'll move to a change resolution to include vacancies of two positions as opposed to a vacancy.
A motion and a second? Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramos? Oops, sorry. Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
All right, that was just a modify. Now we're gonna, do I hear a motion to for the resolution is modified?
I'll move to approve Resolution oh-four twenty-twenty-three as modified, a resolution declaring a vacancy on Town Council and outline, I'm sorry.
Vacancies.
Vacancies. Well, I said it's modified. I was reading the language as modified on Town Council and outlining an appointment process.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
And that motion passed five, the resolution passed five-zero. Our last resolution for the night is oh-five twenty-twenty-three, a resolution to approve a single water service connection outside of our current water service boundary. Mr. Tharnish, welcome to the party.
Good evening, Town Council. Resolution you have before you tonight is to approve a single water connection that is currently outside of our current water service boundary. The owner of the Palmer Lake Mobile Home Ranch, which is probably within a thousand feet of our current boundary, has requested if he could obtain a water supply for his, for his site, for his property. Some of the background on this that I presented in the background report was that he is currently undergoing some major radium issues with his wells that he uses to supply his residents. And he has been talking to the Town of Palmer Lake about a potential, the potential of them supplying him. And Town of Palmer Lake does not have the capability. They are a little over a mile and a half away at their closest water main. And they're really not in their plans to run water mains all the way up Highway one-oh-five to meet them. A lot of the people that are along Highway one-oh-five are, are within the Town of Palmer Lake, but their water system ends pretty much near where the Mission Training International is off of one-oh-five, somewhere in that area. So they came to us asking if it's possible with our new twelve-inch water main that's going to go along Highway one-oh-five, if there will be a possibility for, for them to tie into us, to pay a tap fee and to take service from us. We don't, we only have one other customer that currently is in that situation, and that customer has been taking water from us for forty to fifty years, and that's the town's wastewater plant. It actually sits in the county. But there's been a service connection to that property from way before I ever started here. I've been here quite a while. So what's going to happen or what we're asking for here is if this connection is made, then they would become a customer of the town, but because they're outside of the Town of Monument service boundary, what typically happens is you would charge them one and a half times for what we call the volumetric rate. In other words, that's the amount of water that they actually use. The town would provide the meter for this so that we maintain control and we own it, just like we own all the water meters that we currently provide water to. It's the only thing in people's houses that the town actually owns. This connection is, is designed to be a two-inch connection, which is what he currently has with his whole system. Our only responsibility would be to that meter and the tap connection, which would be in the right of way for Highway one-oh-five. This connection would not be made until the new line is built and tested and put in service, which right now is looking like somewhere between April and May. Could be a little later, depends on the contractor and when he's going to get to that point. The, the new twelve-inch line for our new tank being built west of here is, is more than sufficient in size to, to meet the demand. The current demand of this trailer park is equivalent about, about twenty-six homes. It's about a three percent increase in our current demand, which is well within our, our current capacity to meet. They are currently still in the Town of Palmer Lake, so the question of de-annexing and annexing came up. But this time that, that is something that the homeowner or the owner of the park will pursue down the, down the road. That's a much more complicated process. And the main reason behind him wanting to pursue that would be to get out from under the one and a half times the rate versus the, the standard one-point-oh rate that everybody in town spends. So it's an ask of the owner. We've done our research. We've done our homework. We've done the calculations. We more than are capable of doing this to help solve his current radium problem. If he pursues his own treatment in his park, it's going to be several hundred thousand dollars on his own. And I mean, it's, it's kind of a, we want to help this person out because they're a neighbor, they're next to the town. We have a water main running right next to their property within the right of way. It's an easy reach for us. But again, to, to take on something like this outside of the service boundary requires the Town Council to, to approve that connection. If you have any questions, and I believe Mr. Lynn Jack should be in the audience to take questions. I don't know if he made, oh, there he is.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure there are some questions regarding this.
So we have a cost estimate of how much?
A cost estimate would be bared solely by the owner of the trailer park.
And if this one line happens to break at some point in time, who does the repair? Who's, who's on the hook to do the repairs?
If it's the, if there's a leak at the tap connection, that would be on us because it's, it's tying to our line. The same way if there's a, a tap connection on, on a neighborhood within the town and, and the break is on the main or that connection, it would be the town water operators repairing that.
Okay.
But once it gets beyond a meter, it's the home, it's the owner of the property.
And you're saying this is for a product, this would be the equivalent, providing water to the equivalent of twenty-six homes?
Yes, that's because the, the amount of usage they have, every, every home, we calculate for a design purpose is about half acre foot of water per year. In his situation, it's about thirteen acre feet of water per year. So that's how I got to twenty-six homes.
If they go, excuse me, if they go above that amount, say if they get happy with washing their cars, so to speak, during the summertime?
Well, I suppose that, that's a possibility, but our conversations with, with the homeowner, it's very unlikely. They seem to be pretty consistent with their usage over the last several years. We don't anticipate any, any issues with their demand fluctuating a little bit as, as the season goes on.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. So if, if they hook up to our water service, then those water rights that they have currently, that goes to the town?
I don't believe so. Water rights are only transferable upon an annexation, and those would be done by, by, I forget the type of deed. I think it's special warranty deeds for each aquifer. So what would happen though with us applying them is the homeowner would have to give up his well because that's standard practice when you, when you commit to a service coming on. My guess is he'll be more than glad to give up his well, since that's a source of, of his radium issues.
Right.
And we would probably go to an abandonment of that well. I, I see no potential to, to, to have a use out of that well because it's basically high in radium.
Okay. And then speaking of radium, so is that, so this is like a two-part question. Does that impact the town's radium system at all? And that's, and does, and we've got three more wells going in that is an unknown for radium. So if, if there was a problem with any of those wells, would this, would this impact the town itself if, if there was an issue with that?
Well, it's kind of a two-part answer.
Right.
Yeah. The first one, this would not impact the town's previous radium issues. The town spent a little over a million dollars installing a radium removal at our problem well about a year and a half ago. And that system has been working excellent since it's been putting on, getting almost zero, zero radium coming out of it. It's doing what, what the money was well spent. If the new wells that we're planning on drilling over this next several months do end up with, with some kind of a radium problem, then we will have to look at rerouting the discharge of those wells to, to different plants that we currently have. It's something we're working on, we're thinking of, but right now we're not anticipating, given to the depth that those wells will be drilled, and we have similar wells in similar locations. All have been good producers and very minimal water quality issues.
So this, so this doesn't have, this, this particular park wouldn't be using any of the new wells?
Well, that's a, that's a.
I know, I know you pressurize the whole system, but I mean, wouldn't be dependent on that, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Not individually, no. All, all of our wells feed into our distribution system at nine different locations. So all the water from all the wells mixes with everything we have. So there's not, when, sometimes I get asked the question, does, does that problem well feed my house? The answer is yes and no. It's in the system, so some of that water could be there. But generally speaking, we have a lot of wells and we have a high turnover rate where our water gets used almost as quick as we make it, especially in the summer, that we don't anticipate any issues with, with those type of things that come up like that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tharnish about allowing, what was your name, sir? Lynn Jackal, connecting to our water system, providing them water?
Question. So this, you said it was the equivalent of twenty-six. Is there any future more development or is twenty-six the maximum houses?
Can you come up here and? That way we can get it recorded for the people at home.
Not anticipating any further development.
But is there room for it? Should anybody?
We have, yes, we have approximately three acres that is not occupied right now. The total property is fifteen acres. And we have three acres. If anything, we would probably want to look at some sort of storage or different things that our folks have.
For that area. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay. I'll look for a motion. Uh, this is not a public hearing item. This is just a resolution. You can bring it, you can discuss it during public comment if you'd like. I'm sorry? Oh, the reason that they did not want to annex to they have to de-annex from Palmer Lake first, and if I'm not mistaken, Palmer Lake denied their request. Yes, their their board denied their request, so this is how he gets water from us this way.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution oh five twenty twenty-three, a resolution to approve a single water service connection outside of our current water service boundary.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Council member Romanella?
Yes.
Council member King?
Okay, I just want to make a clarification here when I vote. So to me, um, this seems like a health issue for the residents that are there. And I think um, we probably owe it to them um, considering that the radon levels are are or the radium levels are high in their water. So um, and the fact that it's going to be one and a half times our water rate doesn't harm us any, so I'll vote yes on it.
Council member Kimple?
Yes, due to the uh, situation and being good uh, stewards and helping out our neighbor, I say yes.
Merrilla Kind?
Yes.
Council member Abbott?
Yes.
All right, that resolution passes five zero. We have completed the resolutions and we are moving on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Erickson, you keep in time? Okay, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Wow, that is a complete change from previous. Oh, sorry, Brandy. I couldn't see you.
So Brandy Turner, two zero six five Bobcat Valley Court. Um, first of all, I want to congratulate you guys for earning the trust of our community. And when you say your stomach drops when you hear something, when I heard that Redman had resigned, it really did. It really did uh, make my stomach drop. It were losing a big part of our community and a big advocate for us. Um, so this is the beginning of a positive future for Monument. Um, we voted for you, but that doesn't mean that your responsibility to the voters is over. It's just starting, really. We trust you guys to make decisions for our town, but also expect you to continue to listen to us. Even uh, even if we don't agree with you, sometimes we don't. We do expect you to listen. Uh, we expect you to act in a way that brings nothing but respect to our community. Um, I do want to ask you and uh, personally from me as well as a bunch of other people in the uh, community, I would like to ask you to continue the investigation that was related to the Fair Claims Practices Act. I want to suggest that we hire a fully independent investigator um, to investigate the same three questions. Although poorly written, uh, as the prior board had proposed, I believe this is the only way, the only way that we're going to be able to move past this. It's going to cost us money that we've already spent. But to continue to brawl about this issue, it's going to cost us even more. It's going to cost us more money, more time, and really more disgrace for our community. Um, I suggest we reach out to SIRSIA to uh, bring in an independent person who is not related to anybody on the board. If there's any way, and I know without uh, having quorum, that we could have Steve and Santa recuse themselves from voting for that person because they are involved in the investigation. I don't know if that's possible, something to throw out there. Um, but I definitely want to see that continue. I want to see a reputable investigation occur. I want to see a true investigation occur, and I want to see an investigation that the people can look at and say, I understand what the motive was. I understand the answer to the questions. And now I understand the outcome. So I'd like to ask that of you guys. Um, and last, I want to kind of address the, can't see you guys with my glasses on, but the amazing community that's come about um, really since uh, twenty twenty-one, when Barb Knett put the SOS out on Nextdoor. Um, yeah, applause for Barb. Um, and it was really just about some warehouses. Um, but really it brought this town together. Uh, your part is not over as a community member. Just because these good people are on the council, just because we trust them, does not mean our part is over. We need you to continue to be engaged. We need to let them know what we want and what we need. And we need to make sure that these guys live up to the expectations that we have of them. I'm sure they will. And I'm very proud to be a part of this community.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Koopman?
Greg Koopman, resident of Monument. Um, just to second what Brandy Turner said as far as leaning on SIRSIA uh, for assistance with this. I believe they gave at least four recommendations for attorneys that could assist with that investigation. And to take it one step further, we we don't have a lawyer, uh, so those would be the legal counsel to to seek out as a town. But to take it one step further to also uh, request assistance in evaluating the actions of the previous board, um, to Councilmember King's point or Pro Tem uh, King's point, um, when you modified the consent agenda to also review the actions of those board members or council members during um, the time from from the election till till now, that also needs to be looked at. Um, I heard you modify the consent agenda to double check. I'm not certain you voted to approve the consent agenda as modified, so to double check to make sure that occurs as well. But lean on SIRSIA and seek uh, true legal advice.
Thank you. Ms. Erickson, can you check to see if we voted for the consent agenda as modified? Wish we had an attorney. Um, okay, well, I uh, can we can we go back and re I don't know if we can or not. Buy an attorney. Yeah, so uh, we'll just quickly, anybody make a mo- can someone make a motion to vote on the consent agenda as modified?
I'll make a motion to um.
A motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Merrilla Kind?
Yes. Thank you for that. Uh, we'll go back to public comment. Any other members like to make public comment?
I should start with saying Monument residence, so people don't actually know where I live. Um, a couple of questions. Um, uh, I guess to the third Brandy's point. Um, at the last time or the time before I did ask uh, that the investigation um, would be done and it would be done right. Upon doing a little bit of research on uh, Grant Vanderjagt, I don't feel like it was done right at all. Uh, I feel like there was a, it was very biased um, to use a legal term. Um, and so I, again, I would like to have um, to to their point again, SIRSIA and one of the recommended attorneys. Um, and again, I also agree with them that uh, both uh, Councilman Pro Tem King and Councilman Abbott should recuse themselves um, to again, once again, um, follow through with their their agenda and their platform when they ran, full transparency and honesty and above approach. And so I think that would be, if any way possible for that to continue, I think that would be extremely uh, appropriate and extremely needed for this community. Um, and then the last thing I say, I will say, I will ask the question um, is if uh, if uh, Greg Koopman decides to run for the board, does he has to shave his head as well? Um, that's just what I wanted to know. So uh, yeah. So I just wanted to, that's that's all I had, but uh, um, and I also want to say, uh, Red, if you are watching, um, you served a short time, but it was a very needed time, and we are grateful for what you've done. Um, and Monument is better for it, so thank you.
Any other members of our in-house? We've got a couple of people. Joel, have a seat. You'll be next.
Janet Ladowski, Snowwood Drive, Town of Monument. I'd like to thank those of you who are sitting in the council for stepping up to serve our community. We're very lucky to have you. I understand why Redman had to resign, but I want him to know that he is a great loss to our community. The other thing I want to bring up, I did not hear any discussion about landscaping for that whole area where the KFC is. And I'm hoping that landscaping for future development will be clearly addressed so that minimal water is used. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lesby?
Joel Lesby, eight uh, ten eighty-three night blue circle. I just wanted to say that uh, this investigation that's going to take place needs to be done in a timely way. I think the commission, all my co-commissioners need to be cleared or it just needs to be cleared up. You know, I feel like this has placed a a cloud over the whole commission. Uh, I feel like there's been libelous and slanderous accusations. And uh, it doesn't sit well with me or anybody else on the commission for that matter. So thank you for pursuing it.
Thank you. Anybody else in? Sorry. Come on down.
Patty Foster in Woodmore. Um, so I know that this, um, the last part of this is about um, comments. Is there a part of the meeting where we can ask questions? I know from past meetings, when I asked questions, I was told they couldn't be answered because it was strictly about comments. So I know that there's probably quite a few of us in here that don't know why Redman Ramus recused or stepped down. Um, and those kinds of things, again, if it could come to light so that we can have trust and belief in our our council and everything, full disclosure. And so I'm just wondering, is there a time where people uh, members can or community members can ask questions and get answers, or where can we go and get answers?
So uh, the board hasn't yet created its set of rules and ethics that are mandated by the the charter. Probably going to have several workshops over the course of the next few months where those will be developed and that probably will come up as to whether there'll be a two-way dialogue uh, between the council members and the public for those kind of things. Um, and I will be hosting a quarterly town hall that will be completely open and not a public meeting kind of a situation where they'll be voting and anything like that. And it will just be me. So as to the Redmond, I will let Redmond decide whether he wants to come out and publicly state why he does, he decided to resign.
Okay, so at this time, no explanation?
I I won't speak for Redmond. Anybody else? In-house? Mr. Anderson, been waiting to see that, say that. Okay, if there's nobody else who would like to make public comment, we will move on to council authorization items. Mr. Foreman?
Sir, I have three. Um, on January seventeenth, Trinity Community Park would like to make a presentation regarding town support for a GOCO grant application for the Trinity Community Park. Um, the second one is a presentation on January seventeenth regarding an energy performance contracting and investment grade audit. Uh, we have, we want to um, um, we want to contract with a company. We want them to come in and make a presentation to you. We did an RFP and uh, interviewed three different companies and came up with this company. We want them to make a presentation to you to go forward with an investment grade audit for our energy performance so that we could provide better uh, energy performance for the town of Monument in our buildings. Something similar to what the school district is doing currently. And then number three is presentation on February sixth regarding the Heart of Monument Park project, which is the park that we're wanting to obtain uh, next to our Waterwise Garden. Uh, it's next to Third Street right by the uh, church. So we'd like to make that presentation on February sixth.
Okay, anybody have any uh, issues or concerns with those items being added to the agenda?
Well, um, on February sixth, will the Heart of Monument Park be the only presentation? Being, no beings that will probably be having interviews.
Oh, right.
Members, that might take some time. So that's why I don't think we should, that's why I'm asking.
I haven't, we haven't put that agenda together yet.
Yeah, well, I would recommend that if that's going to be the precedent, that would be the only one because we we don't know how many people will be applying, how many interviews, how many, how long that process will take. If that makes sense.
I agree.
I have many items that have already been advertised for February sixth, including the annexation um, that we just did the initiating of.
We 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 have until April, what for the um, the, so fill the vacancies, April, April second? So it's possible that we could have uh, have the candidates, if there's a lot of them, divided up into two meetings, the first and the second ones in February. Um, but if we get a lot, we're going to have to make some adjustments. Otherwise, we'll, it'll take a long time to go through them all.
Okay.
Right, I would agree. The vacancies are most important. Can can this be moved this February sixth?
All the items for February sixth have already been advertised. Um, you would have to at least hold the public hearing and the one would probably need to be for an hour, um, since it's the annexation one. And then um, the others you would, you could continue. But there are
Well, but if you're asking us to approve this now, are you saying what's already on it has been advertised, but this has not because you're asking for our approval?
Right, the annexation is for February sixth and you just approved the resolution.
Right, but this park presentation, we don't have to have this on February sixth, do we?
Then I would suggest we do not.
Suggest we don't.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Okay, uh, next. There to the next election. So the next election is two years. All right, uh, next thing uh, is town council comments. Um, anybody have any comments they would like to make?
Well, I I would just like to echo and 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 thank the community input on uh, continuing the investigation. I know uh, Merrilla Kind, you had said that you were committed to doing that. And uh, I just look forward to that as um, it does need to be handled properly. And the the report that was presented did have information on it that should be looked into in more depth, and that's all I've got.
Anybody else?
Um, I have a couple. I am also fine with pers- pursuing this investigation. I am not fine with the fact that this last investigation spent substantial time critiquing and analyzing the Home Rule Charter, which was never a part of the scope. And that money that allocated toward that was towards that needs to be reimbursed to the town somehow. Um, I also want to just say that uh, I'm all about citizen government. People who know me know that. I want to see you people get involved. I want to see committees be informed that um, give us input as to what you want. Um, this will take some time for sure. Um, Ms. Ladowski talked about the landscaping around the the KFC and um, I think part of our agenda going forward would be to try to figure out how to use less water around here. And um, so that'll be duly noted for sure. And and I and I want to completely thank all you people for coming out. This is, this is awesome. We hardly ever see rooms packed like this, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
A couple of things. Um, first and foremost, I really do appreciate the comments from the community, the residents. First and foremost, I really do appreciate the comments from the community, the residents, and those around our community. They're much appreciated. I want you all to know that you are all very much, including the town staff especially, and our, and our police force. You are all respected, appreciated, loved, and blessed. And I really do appreciate your guys' input and time spent letting us know where you all stand and, and what you all expect from your new council board. And I hope that we don't fail our community. What I, some other things that I would like to see, and then I have a question. I would like to see, I mean, we all received a town council orientation packet. Can we get that posted online on the Town of Monument website? So, I mean, the residents also see exactly what is being shared with us and what we're reviewing.
Definitely.
I think that that would be appreciated by, by the, by the residents themselves, just to understand. Because there's some things in there, it talks about on, it's a PDF document. On page one seventy-seven, on page four, check two, it talks about the expectations of our community from, for the council. It talks about the Roberts Rule, the Sunshine Laws, all these things that have come up in the past that people have questions or misinterpreted it or misquoted. And I think having that posted for clarity would help not only the town, the council, staff, and the residents so we can work together better. Lastly, my question is about Mr. Vanderjack. Is he still on? Is he still billing the town at this point in time after, after the last meeting and he submitted that document? Whether, however, all the potential flaws there were, my, I'm going to keep my feelings out of it, but there was a document that was presented to the board. It was posted on public. I'd just like to know if he's still on the roll, so to speak.
He is.
Getting some kind of money from the town, which I don't feel is appropriate at this point in time. I would like to see that stopped.
He has billed the town as much as I can approve. And so, if he bills the town anymore, it will have to come to the board for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify on the council authorization items that, that there was clear direction given that we're adding two things in the seventeenth, but not to the sixth.
I agree with that. I mean, is that, yeah, do you understand that?
Is that?
That's what I was.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. No, thank you. Any other? You good? You good? Okay.
Thank you guys for joining us tonight. This was huge. I love, excuse me, I love to see the audience full. It means a lot. It means a lot to be up here. And I fully, fully support an investigation. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it should be done the right way with credible people, and I'm definitely supporting community involvement. I want you guys to share your thoughts with us. Email, come to the meetings, whatever it is. We want to feel like a big family. It's probably a good dysfunctional family, but nonetheless, we, we still want your feedback. We want you guys to, to come up and speak up and, and say how you feel and what you want to see for the community. I think that's so important, and it's valuable. It's valuable, at least to me. I know it's valuable to these gentlemen, and I look forward to serving the town. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Because I have quite a few things. There's still some business we need to discuss that we couldn't get on the agenda. So, we're going to discuss them here. The first thing is, as we've discussed multiple times throughout the night, it's been stated we need an attorney. So, I don't know how, I mean, council member Romanello is aware, the rest of you need to be updated on how we get an attorney. We've got options, contract or town staff. There's a lot of pros and cons, but Mr. Foreman has agreed to give us some explanation. We need to continue to give direction in a very forceful way to get us an attorney quickly, even on interim basis. So, Mr. Foreman, if you would like to?
So, you have the option to, and, and let me remind everybody, it's your choice, not mine. I don't hire the town attorney in the Home Rule Charter. It requires you to hire the town attorney. And so, it's your choice. What I put together, what I had finance put together is a spreadsheet that shows what we've spent in the past, what we spent in the past on contract attorney. In 2022 is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, that includes a lot of work that we typically normally don't do, but we had to do in 2022. The salary when we had a staff attorney was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We believe probably to be closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this time. That does not include benefits for them being a staff attorney's benefits would increase that to somewhere near two hundred thousand dollars. And so, having a staff attorney probably would cost you anywhere from a hundred to fifty thousand dollars more per year, having a staff attorney versus having a contract attorney. Now, we've talked to staff, directors and everything like that on what their choice would be. They feel more comfortable having an outside attorney, having a contract attorney. Most of the time with a staff attorney, you get somebody that has one specialty, and it may, they may call them town government, but their specialty doesn't include some of the things that we get with contract attorney. Like with Joe Rivera, Joe had multiple attorneys at his beck and call to where he could answer questions for us. It wasn't always Joe giving us the, the answers. Same thing with Catherine Sellers. It wasn't just her. They had several multiple attorneys with their firm. You've got to remember, when we're looking for somebody, we're looking at police issues, we're looking at HR, we're looking at land planning. We have a water rights attorney, but they specialize in water rights. We have other water issues such as right-of-way acquisition, land purchases that are done by the town attorney. Joe Rivera is still working with us right now. He's been working on one land use and land purchase for almost a year. And so, some of these items take long time, and staff believes that having a contract attorney is more beneficial for staff, and it gives us more opportunities to be able to use their expertise versus having a staff attorney on staff that may just have one expertise and maybe trying to learn the other expertises that we actually need.
Anybody have any questions? The, the goal here is to provide some form of unanimous direction to provide, Mr. Foreman, in order to get us an attorney as quickly as possible.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that they have other attorneys at, at their beck and call, so to speak. And I also appreciate trying to save money, which is important to me for one thing. This, this last several months has been an unbelievable experience for, for me and others. But one thing that I want to say is when we put this Home Rule Charter together, we took it mainly from Centennial. And Castle Pines took it from Centennial, and they modified it. It's been in Centennial for, I don't know, ten years or fifteen years probably. And, and Castle Pines has had it, maybe five years, whatever it is. They haven't had a hiccup. This last month or two has stress-tested Centennial's charter, really, in essence, and things that nobody would have ever questioned or come up to try to manipulate to an outcome. And because of that, we lost our interim attorney. We're operating without an attorney, and I don't know where we, I don't know where we go with this because, you know, they're, they're in, in, in some ways, this town seems to stress-test everything. And, and I, I don't know, I don't know where we go with that, but, you know, and, and my first thought would be, it would be really nice to just have somebody here full-time that, that could get us through all this stuff where we don't have to go back and forth with these contract attorneys, but I, but I understand, I understand what you're saying, and, and I guess I'm asking you to kind of talk me through that a little bit.
Well, I talked to Michael Penny today, and you know Michael. He's the town manager with Castle Pines. And he's one of the reasons why we had hired Catherine Sellers. And, you know, they, they came across as a really good law firm to be able to help us with Home Rule. Today, I talked to him about hiring one of the people that SIRSA had asked us, you know, given us the list of employee, list of attorneys, and it was Linda Mishaw. And so, I talked to Linda just now, earlier today, and she doesn't have the bandwidth to be able to do it. Currently, Castle Pines does contract out their attorneys, and Linda Mishaw's firm has about seven attorneys working for them, and they have denied working for us right now due to the fact that they've got so much work that they can't handle the work that we have. I have three more people on this list from SIRSA that I'm going to be contacting tomorrow. We're looking at, we, staff needs an interim town attorney. We have so many things going on right now. My town clerk has about three or four cora requests that she doesn't feel comfortable issuing right now until that she speaks with an attorney. And so, I've got to get an interim town attorney hired to come in here. And so, that's what I'm focusing on right now, is contacting the rest of people on this list. I also got Linda Mishaw to give me another list of attorneys. Funny, several, almost everybody has given me Catherine Sellers' group, and, you know, we can't hire them now. So, I think I need to focus on getting an interim town attorney in here so that staff has the ability to get their work done. And then y'all focus on, do you want a staff attorney, or do you want a contract attorney in the future? But I think we need to get an interim town attorney hired as soon as possible.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board with that. I mean, this operating without an attorney is, is, is going to put us in a bad situation as a town. So, me personally, I, I would give you the green light right now to get an interim town attorney, for sure. And then, you know, however we work through this process, but that would be my suggestion.
So, contractually seems to be the quicker method. Also, contractually, what if, what's the obligation of the law firm if they so deem to try to break that contract or step away from the town after they're hired?
So, just like we just saw, they can send us a letter, and with that letter, they can stop being our town attorney. But so, just like we've seen with other directors, a staff attorney can do the same thing. A staff attorney can hand in their notice, give you two weeks' notice, and they're gone. So.
How much more did you say you were estimating it on a staff versus the contract?
In 2021, we felt like we spent about a hundred thousand dollars. In 2022, it rose to about a hundred and fifty thousand. So, anywhere between fifty and seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, we would say, by going with a contract. It really depends on workload.
Yeah, I've, I've seen over the course of the five years, or whatever it was, a couple of times where the contract level can get really high, and, and the one challenge that I have long-range with contract, though it might be very prudent to do that short-term, but I think the long-term solution, I would lean more toward having a staff attorney because in today's times, or as we talked about, you know, Monument being a testing ground for everything, to have somebody on staff and limit in a high-ramp period or a period of distress, the potential of that running high, I think is something that needs to be looked at. I really do.
Okay, but we are in agreement that we should get an interim town attorney right now, and then an RFP, RFQ, RFP, what are you, RFing?
RFQ.
RFQ? For?
Watch your language.
Sorry. To get a, a permanent either, at that point, we have, if we have an interim, at that point, we can then further discuss and make a decision if we want to go staff or long-term contract.
And we can interview at that point. But that also brings up the point about an HR person. How are we on getting an HR person? Because that could help you also find an attorney if we had an HR person.
Well, currently, we have an interim HR.
Interim HR, what's your long-term plan there?
So, we've already opened the position. As soon as people start applying, I think we have some.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Eric Romaro, I'm the current interim HR Director at the moment. We have over thirty-five applications as of about five minutes ago for an HR manager. We plan to interview as soon as next week. And we're going to continue to work and build the HR department for the Town of Monument to make sure we're meeting all of their needs, meeting and exceeding the needs of Monument. We're currently almost fully staffed with the positions that we have in the kind of in-between our previous HR Director and me taking on the role during this phase. So, the HR department is up and running and moving fully function, we're fully functioning as if we have somebody right now. Our top priority is obviously police chief and the HR manager position. But I'm happy to update and meet with you all at any time to help answer any questions.
And, and Eric, I, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I didn't mean anything, but what I meant was, is long-range, we do need that position.
Correct. We, we have a few different options and plans under Mike's direction of how we want to see that department grow and improve. So, we're definitely working to get that figured out.
Thank you.
Mr. Foreman, you feel like you have direction from the council?
I do, yes.
Okay. All right. And it is whatever we can get as fast as we can get it.
And then?
And then we can, right.
The interim can also turn into either contract.
The hope for staff would be that we hire an interim, they work out very well, and that y'all chose them to be the contract attorney for the permanent town attorney.
All right, I've got, I've got a brief statement I'd like to make, and then I do have some motions also related to this investigation, because I was dragged into it. And I had nothing to do with any of the actions that were put into the the resolution that was passed. So, over the, the past few weeks, the town staff has been inundated with demands to provide information to a rogue council and an attorney with proven conflicts of interest who lied to the council and the citizens of Monument. When the topic of ethics violations came up during the initial questioning of this attorney, he said he had never had one made against him. While this may be true concerning his time as an attorney, it is not true of his time as a licensed Colorado real estate broker. Not only were there multiple ethics violations filed against him, but in exchange for reducing the fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollar fine down to two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, Mr. Vanderjack was given a choice to either pay the money and keep his license, or pay the lesser amount and have his license revoked. Mr. Vanderjack chose to have his license revoked and pay the smaller fine. So, he lied to everybody who was here, present, lied to the council, lied to the staff, lied to the citizens. The attorney's actions during this investigation were self-serving, and that the only council members that supported it were the ones that were termed out, lost their respective elections, or, and were also granted access to the information being collected. Council member Romanello and I were left out, or, no, yeah, you were left out. Romanello was left out, and myself was left out, and Redmond Ramos were left out. Two of the council members directly contribute to the failure of the town's Home Rule Charter, which passed by a two-to-one majority this past November. The town charter was not part of the resolution that the attorney was supposed to be investigating. Despite the attorney agreeing that a proper investigation would take longer than the original requested timeframe, he joined in the obvious collusion and sunshine law violations by granting complete access to council members and citizens of the information being collected as part of this investigation. This is something that I have never witnessed since I first took seat here in 2020. Ignoring the obvious persona relationship between this attorney and a sitting member of this council, rushing the investigation's timetable, the complete biased opinion between the council members and findings from this attorney, the report itself, and finally, the monetary remuneration. This report itself seems suspect in that a former council- This report itself seems suspect in that a former council member may have even contributed to the approved findings. I am sure that the council and citizens would like to discuss the actions taken by the former council and this attorney further. However, due to the time and because the town will require an attorney to represent the town and those implicated in this report, I'm going to be making a few motions here and I hope the board will take those into consideration. The first motion I'm making is to set aside this current investigation and the resulting report until such time that the town has hired an attorney who can properly review the report and consult with the town council at a future public meeting as to what actions the town and council should take. I've made a motion. Do I hear a second? Uh, we can, we can make a motion anytime. Last time we had an attorney, he said, we can make motions anytime we want. Sorry. Do I, I can repeat the motion if anybody wants to hear it again. So, we have motion and a second. Ms. Erickson. And I can give you the text of the motion.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
What you're saying is putting this off until we have the interim attorney.
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes, motion passes.
Can you repeat that motion just so then it's clear on record?
Sure. Motion is to set aside the current investigation and resulting report until such time that the town has hired an attorney who can properly review the report and consult with the town council at a future public meeting as to what actions the town and council should take. Next motion I'd like to make is to terminate the agreement with Grant Vanderjack and his law firm. Inform the, the firm, the town is to in, inform the firm to not perform any more work related to this investigation. And that town staff is to withhold payment on any future invoices until such time as our town attorney has had time to review the original engagement letter, fee agreement and invoices already paid.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. To terminate the agreement. In other words, we're firing Vanderjack and his law firm. Let's, don't push it. Don't, don't rush. I've got more. This is just to fire the attorney. You reading my mind? He, he, there's legal ramifications. He can't keep the information. It's not his. So, we'll get to that. There is a motion and a second.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
And it passed five to zero. The last motion that I would like to make is to have the town inform Mr. Vanderjack and his law firm that they are to turn over all collected materials, witness statements without any redactions. A complete listing of all persons granted access to the materials and the method in which they were granted access back to the town of Monument as it is the property of the town and not Mr. Vanderjack or his law firm as he indicated in emails and his fee agreement or whatever you call it. All information will be in digital format and provided to the town clerk and/or the IT manager for safekeeping until a town manager is hired. Town Attorney, I was looking at you. Sorry, Town Attorney. It's written Town Attorney, sorry. Town Attorney.
Is that meaning that we as the board have access to that material, which isn't what I think we should have?
We will have access to that material when our attorney says he's prepared to present it to us. We already have access to some of the material because it was leaked before the board got it. So, I have no problem with the board getting access to the material. I prefer, and depending on what everybody agrees, it sits locked up in a, in a vault someplace until the new attorney is hired to review it with us.
I, well, I would say that the only, the only thing I'm saying that is there is a difference between staff and the board and from a legal point of view, without having an attorney, I'd ask about that. I'm just, I'm not sure about that because I think that information should be released to the board, for the board to see. I'm not sure about being locked up from the board or from anybody else. As I know that there was talk about staff, I, I'm not for against anybody's staff or otherwise, but we're it just, there's something there that seems to cross something to me. That's all I'm saying. And I wish, again, we did have an attorney here. So, that's, that's the only challenge that I have with that. Now, if we were releasing that directly, that information to us as a board in, in confidentiality as a board and the board would handle themselves properly where one board member doesn't get to make a decision without a vote of four, I'd be okay with that. But that's just my only comment.
No, and I, I weighed the word, the verbiage around this, but because the attorney-client privilege was violated before the meeting even started, not just by a council member, but by the attorney himself. He, he, remember, he started off at this meeting saying this was attorney-client privileged information. He wanted to go into executive session. But he himself violated it by sending it to one, one of the council members and she released it to the media, which he sat here and admitted to. So, it's in the public realm now. I just, there's no reason to take the investigation and shove it out there until we have an attorney to review it. And I'm fine with the town staff locking it up and in digital format and just leaving it there. So, it's untouched. We've got places to put stuff, right? Mr. Anderson? So, anyway, I've made a motion. I could repeat it if necessary. Do you need it repeated? I can send it to you after. All right, you all say it again. To inform Grant Vanderjack and his law firm that they are to turn all collected materials, witness statements without any redactions. A complete listing of all persons granted access to the materials and the method in which they were granted the access back to the town of Monument as it is the property of the town and not Mr. Vanderjack or his law firm. All information will be in digital format and provided to the town clerk and/or IT manager for safekeeping until a town attorney is hired. We have a first and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
I will say that hopefully, used word holistically, that all that information comes back to get the hopefully back on the right track for an investigation. So, I will say yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
As it's obviously already passed, I, I am going to vote no, but only because we do not have an attorney and I, and because that attorney would be accountable directly to the board and because of the Home Rule Charter, taking the clerk and making them not directly accountable to the board, I'm voting no.
That it? You get everybody? That's four to one then. Okay, last thing I want to discuss is on December 2nd, Heidi Beadle, a reporter for the Colorado Times Recorder, released a story about an investigation that was protected by attorney-client privilege. The investigation concerned members of this town's staff. Why this investigation was leaked to the media is unknown, but based on recent events, I suspect it was politically motivated. The only way information provided to the council that can be shared publicly is if the, under attorney-client privilege is if the council votes to remove the privilege. This vote never took place. On a hunch, I submitted a cora request to see if any of our council members was so brazen to send the investigation from their town email account. And unfortunately, I was correct. The evidence shows that a former council member sent multiple emails concerning this investigation to themselves and Heidi Beadle. Should the council vote in favor of removing the attorney-client privilege related to this investigation, the information from the cora request that I made can be made public, much like the leaked investigation. So, if, I won't make the motion this time, but if anybody would like to make a motion to remove the attorney-client privilege related to the investigation that took place in May of 2022, about two of our town staff, including former chief of police, Sean Hemingway, by all means.
I'm unclear on what we're trying to achieve here, what we're doing, despite the language. Can you clarify this for me, please?
Sure. I think since the public was made aware of something that had no business being made aware of because the council members were asked by attorneys what we wanted to do and somebody leaked the investigation, I think the public has a right to know who the leaker was. And so, the only.
This is from the incident of May of last year.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we can, we can vote and see where it goes. I'll make the, the motion to release the attorney-client privilege from the May 2022 executive session?
Invest, no, never went to executive session.
From the May 2022 investigation.
I have a motion. We have a second. I'll make a second. Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
As we have stated, for transparency, yes.
All right, that motion passes five to zero. Does anybody else have any, anybody on the council have any more comments?
Move to adjourn.
Did I have a, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, I have, I have one comment before you make that motion.
Okay.
I know. I, I would like to just publicly state my appreciation for Redmond Ramos and what he has done for this town. I am saddened that he, that he resigned and I'll let him explain what, why he did, if he chooses to do so. But I was really looking forward to him being on this board. He has a heart for this town that's a mile wide and I just want to publicly thank him for that.
All right, now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
We are adjourned.